Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. My name is Nina Rosamondo. I’m president of the League of Women Voters, South County. On behalf of the League, I would like to welcome you to the second part of the second Meet the Candidates Night for 2018. Tonight’s forums are for South Kingstown. The first one was for the school committee, and this one, as you can see, is for the town council. The views expressed tonight are those of the candidates, not of the League of Women Voters. And our sponsorship of the debate is not an endorsement by the League of any candidate. All candidates qualifying for placement on the ballot have been invited. I’d like to thank you, the members of the audience here at the Narragansett Town Hall, the South Kingstown Candidates for Town Council, and thanks to our viewers on Cox Channel 17 and Verizon 28. This forum is being livestreamed. One of the most important duties we have as citizens is to learn about issues and candidates so we can make informed choices when we vote. If you find a forum like this is an essential part of your election decisions, please consider joining the League and help provide your community with nonpartisan voter education and advocacy for open and accountable government. The League is open to both men — we’d like a few good men to join us — and women. There are membership materials on the table by the door in the back, along with other voter information. Democracy works only when citizens participate in the process. Forums like this could easily be a lost resource to South Kingstown if citizens are only spectators in the process. In fact, the reality is, unless some more residents from South Kingstown join our League, we will not be able to put on these forums in 2020. So, talk with a League member tonight. Consider attending a monthly meeting. Learn some more. We’re here tonight to ask questions of the candidates and to listen respectfully to each of them as they discuss issues important to the future of South Kingstown and Rhode Island. We appreciate your voter interest and enthusiasm, but please, hold your applause and refrain from reacting to the candidates’ answers. This is a nonpartisan forum. I would like to thank many people for helping with this forum: the League of Women Voters Rhode Island Education Fund for providing funding, the town of Narragansett for the use of the town hall and council chambers, and the staff at the Narragansett Town Hall for their help and cooperation. Many thanks to my fellow members of the League of Women Voters, South County, who have worked many hours on planning this event, and to the citizens of South County, in particular, your town, South Kingstown, who submitted a record number of questions for consideration this year. Thanks to the Westerly Public Access Television Studio, PEGRI-TV, for handling the live broadcast and frequent rebroadcasts of this program. And lastly, thanks to the local media covering this forum. Last but by no means least, I would particularly like to thank and welcome our moderator tonight, Holly Courage. Ms. Courage is past president of the State League of Rhode Island, past president of the Providence League. She is currently treasurer of the League of Women Voters Rhode Island Education Fund and chair of the League of Women Voters U.S. Clearinghouse Committee, a group that maintains a website of studies done by the League around the country. So now to our distinguished moderator, Holly Courage.
Okay, distinguished. I don’t know. Okay. The format for the South Kingstown Town Council Forum. Candidates have drawn lots to determine the seating order. There will be no opening statement, and the closing statement of one minute will be in seating order. Each one-minute question will be directed to only two candidates. The order in which the candidates will be asked a question is random. All candidates will be asked one question before any candidate is asked a second question, and so on through each round. All candidates will be asked the same number of questions. In addition, each candidate has been given two colored index cards, which are wild cards. A candidate may use a wild card to respond to any question which has not been directed to him or her. More than one candidate may use a wild card on any question. However, once a candidate has used all their cards, he or she may only respond to questions directed to him or her. In a candidate’s closing statement, issues or questions not answered during the forum may be addressed. There will also be a series of lightning round questions which require only a yes-or-no answer addressed to all candidates, and each candidate will be given 10 seconds to elaborate beyond a simple yes or no. Okay, to begin. First question will be directed to Deborah Bergner and James O’Neil. Ms. Bergner, what do you consider the number-one issue or challenge facing the town of South Kingstown today?
That’s a great question. For me, I believe that affordable housing is one of the most important issues that our town is facing. As a mother of three children, I believe that when my children complete college, I would love them to be able to return to our community and live up here and work and find meaningful work. I believe that housing needs to be affordable for all families. It is critical to the health and vibrancy of our community to have affordable housing. We work and we live in the backyard of the University of Rhode Island. There are undergraduates and graduate students who complete their degrees and want to stay here and live, and we should provide a variety of options for them as well. In addition, our senior community, if they wish to remain in the community, we should also offer a variety of options for them. I believe that affordable housing should be also done in the right way and in the right areas of town, and in keeping with the characteristics of the particular villages. So I do believe that affordable housing is one of the essential issues.
Thank you. James O’Neil.
Thank you. I believe that we are going to be spending a lot of time in the next few years on the facilities study. I think everyone realizes that this could cost the taxpayers tens of millions of dollars net of what the state will be giving to us. My worry is that 2.1 percent of the state’s public school population is in South Kingstown, yet we’re hoping for somewhere between 10 and 20 percent of the $250 million bond offering. We need to understand that our high school needs to be improved. That’s where everyone will wind up. That’s why that’s most important. So that means that Broad Rock expansion has to come in to begin to support that. It’s just like a funnel, and that will be very costly, and this will involve both the town council and school committee, who must sign off on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next question will go to Abel Collins and Liz Gledhill. Question two: Are you concerned that closing the Wakefield Elementary School will result in a significant downturn in Main Street businesses? Please explain your answer. Mr. Collins?
I think it’s a very valid concern that’s been raised before the council a number of times by the Wakefield Village Association, the Chamber of Commerce. I would love to see data to back up what type of impact we might actually expect, so we’ve asked those groups to provide perhaps some of that information to us. I think the impact, if we do have to go ahead and close Wakefield School, will hopefully only be a short-term thing, and the town council can deal with finding a good use for the property if we’re put in that unfortunate position. But yes, I think it’s certainly a concern.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gledhill?
Hi. I also think it’s a significant concern throughout the community what the impact will be if we do decide to close Wakefield Elementary School. We heard from a lot of the local businesses, including the Chamber of Commerce and the merchant association, about how important Wakefield School is and how it’s essential to running their business year-round. I think it wasn’t until my children were enrolled in school at Wakefield this year that I didn’t realize how many programs the PTO partners with local businesses throughout the year. And I’ve heard from those businesses that the programs that the children enroll in in the wintertime, it’s crucial for their income. It helps maintain those small businesses when a day that they have to close is a day that might close their business forever. So I think maintaining those partnerships is extremely important, and I think that frankly, it’s hasty to consider closing Wakefield School at all unless we have a plan in place that would significantly improve that property and provide them much-needed income for the businesses that are down there now.
Thank you. Mr. O’Neil.
Is this where you respond?
You wanted to respond.
Yes, please. I’ve had an office on Main Street for 25 years, and I have certainly seen the integration of businesses, parents, the kids on Main Street. Back in September 2010, I put in a resolution to the town council at that time, and asking that the Wakefield Elementary School have a special status consideration, that it would not be closed, that other schools would come before Wakefield Elementary. And let me just read you my whereas. Wakefield Elementary School is more than a neighborhood school. It’s an important neighborhood business. Its extended family of parents and children act as an important economic anchor and bring vitality and energy to an appreciative downtown. Also, whereas, Wakefield Elementary is a business model of maximum efficiency, operating at nearly 100 percent of capacity. Since the Wakefield School is second to the Broad Rock expanding, I believe that the school is going to be open for quite a while. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. Okay. The next question will go to Bryant DeCruz and, oh, let’s see, William Gates. Question three: The South Kingstown budget is approximately $96 million a year. What prior budgetary experience did you have before running for election for town council? If you are an incumbent, please include in your answer what you proposed that was included in the budget and what was rejected. If you are not an incumbent, what is your top priority proposal for the budget? Mr. DeCruz.
Thank you very much. They’re asking, I guess, what my experience prior to being on the council is. I’ve run more than one business, a small business, for many years, but also have sat on the board of directors of nonprofits. I have studied my background in business management, entrepreneurship, marketing, accounting, a little bit of that as well. So I think I have a fairly good understanding of the budget. Is the budget complicated? Absolutely. And the reason for that is because we have a limited amount of money that we can tax our taxpayers in our town, and we have to find the most efficient way to utilize that money. When I was first elected, I remember at the meeting with the school committee, you know, my concern was wanting to make sure that we use all of our dollars so that all kids get what they deserve in education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gates.
Thank you. In my professional career, I’ve spent approximately 20 years as a professional project manager. We’re working for a number of Fortune 500 corporations. I’ve had the good fortune to be able to lead and manage very large projects, up to an annual spend of $300 million. That’s a very big part of my responsibilities till today, and I feel confident that those experiences would translate well as a town council member. In terms of — I am not an incumbent. In terms of what I would like to see within the coming years and the budget is, to put it in a little bit different terms, it’s not a single line item, but it’s a spending plan and strategy that addresses a proposal around revitalizing our villages. And I’d invite you to go to electwilliammurraygates.com, and you’ll find all of the details behind that proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McEntee?
First off, thank you for putting on this forum tonight. My entire professional experience has been working as a certified public accountant at a public accounting firm in downtown Providence, Pitrelli-Gilstein &amp; Company. And throughout my entire experience, I’ve worked closely with very many businesses and with decision-makers, trying to get an understanding as to why their costs have increased as compared to budgets, helping them budget appropriately in terms of making future projections, and just understanding the environment in which they operate. One of the things that I want to consider when elected is one of the first things I want to address, is looking at the budget, cutting out the waste, figuring out ways to look for tax relief. Over the last fiscal year, there has been an increase in 24 cents per $1,000 valuation on property taxes. I don’t believe that has to be the case. 20 percent of the homes owned in South Kingstown are owned by non-resident homeowners. I believe there’s potential for a home set exemption, and I want to exploit that, and I want to work with the council to seek out that option. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next question will go to Deborah Kelso and Charles Sweet. What is your opinion about the use of taxpayer dollars to defend South Kingstown shoreline properties as reports of continuing sea level rise and erosion continue with predictions of more rapid rises in the future? Please explain in detail. Ms. Kelso.
So I have strong feelings about the crisis we face, not only as a community, but as a state and as a nation, on the impact of sea level rise. We are ground zero for it. We have 400 miles of shoreline in the state, and South Kingstown certainly faces a challenge. As far as taxpayer dollars going to shore up the shoreline, as we say, we need to protect what we have built. We need to protect what we have allowed to be built, and we need to do everything in our power to make sure that our residents are safe from the impacts of climate change. I think we need to be proactive, not reactive to it, and that’s where I stand on the issues of climate change.
Thank you. Mr. Sweet.
I’m not sure the town of South Kingstown has much that they can do. I think they need to work with the federal government. South Kingstown just does not have the money, certainly, to spend on showing up any of our shoreline. I think they’re going to have to deal with the federal government to find out what we can do to alleviate the problem. I don’t see that there is anything that they can do realistically. I think we need to find out what we can do to make the best of a bad situation. I’m not sure what that is, but that’s what I think we would have to do.
Mr. Gates.
Once again, climate change is certainly a reality that we all have to deal with and face, and the town council in the coming years is going to have to make some interesting decisions. But it’s not limited to just our coastal regions. We have rivers that flow through our most populous areas within town, Wakefield and Peacedale among them, and these rivers are subject to flooding events. Personally, my family has seen insurance claims, with just one business, 2,000 square feet, insurance claims over the past couple of decades in excess of $600,000. One building. And you multiply that by all of the impacted businesses along the rivers. This is a significant concern for us, and I think as the town of South Kingstown. So we have to make investments in studying how these rivers operate. They’re called hydraulic and hydrologic studies, and that’s something that I would propose that this town of South Kingstown make an investment to avoid and to help mitigate some of the long-term impacts.
Thank you. Okay. The next question goes to Rory McEntee and Joe Veely. Question five: When asked about the construction of the existing seawall on Mattoonik Beach Road, CRMC, that’s Coastal Resources Management Corporation, spokesman stated that where the wall ends, quote, “it’s going to exacerbate erosion,” unquote, on other properties. What zoning or building policies would help citizens adjust to the inevitable rising sea levels? Mr. McEntee.
I think we need to continue to monitor the zoning requirements to be flexible in terms of the things that are going on with climate change right now. Erosion is a huge issue, especially in Mattoonik. It’s an issue all across the state, but especially in Mattoonik, and I think we need to be flexible. We need to be willing to work with Kevin Finnegan, the business owner over at the Ocean Mist, and other business owners in that area, and really be flexible in terms of knowing, studying the changes, understanding the changes, and reacting to those changes. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Veely.
Yeah, so we have completed the first portion of the wall in Mattoonik, about 200 feet. What we’ve learned is that what we’ve built works and works well. What we know is that it’s not enough. There will need to be a continuation of that wall. A lot of the erosion, I’m not an expert on this stuff, but a lot of the erosion, I think, besides climate change and sea level rise, the Harbor Refuge that was built, you know, 100-plus years ago, has diverted the tide toward Mattoonik and has actually, in my opinion, has filled in deep holes and created erosion on the shoreline. So what we know is that the 200-plus feet that we did seems to have worked. There’s an estimate of maybe 600 or 800 feet more that needs to be done. I think that we have to find a way to get that done. We owe it to the people that live in that area that we’ve allowed to develop. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ms. Gledhill.
I also think that when we’re addressing climate change, especially coastal erosion, the key to really finding any successful solution is going to be partnerships with the residences and businesses. Because if they’re not on board with our building plans, if our building plans inadvertently and negatively impact their businesses, we could face a crisis where we’re driving people away. So if everyone’s not on board, if everyone’s not educated about the impacts of climate change, if everyone doesn’t understand what we’re doing to address it, we could find ourselves in a totally different situation in litigation. I think that we’ve tried to work with Kevin Finnegan in Mattoonik, and his own engineers have come up with plans about restoring Mary Carpenter’s seawall that’s already there. And it’s an investment that a resident wants to make to address the climate change issue that we have down there, and that’s a savings to taxpayers. So I think that we need to continue those partnerships and those conversations with local businesses and residents to make sure that we’re all together as we address the coastal erosion problems.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Okay. Mr. Collins?
Sorry. Using my answer, it’s time to recover. So to the point of the question, I think a big elephant in the room is the place that CRMC holds in this whole process. Our own local zoning laws are overridden by state regulation. So what we’d really need the state to do is reclassify that area of the shoreline to man-made shoreline, which would allow us to have the flexibility to do some of the, you know, more aggressive design work that Kevin has come up with in that area. I think that does take coordination between residents, the town, and the business owners along that stretch, and it’s certainly going to be critical as, you know, we see sea level rise accelerating over the coming years. So I think a big piece of that is, you know, having our representation before the CRMC when it’s appropriate, but continued interfacing with the governor’s office, the new Office of Resiliency that’s been started under the Infrastructure Bank.
Thank you. Did Mr. O’Neil want to say something? Okay. Okay, round two. The next question. It goes to Mr. Collins and Mr. O’Neil. What do you think needs to change for town council members so that the South Kingstown Comprehensive Plan is followed when zoning and other ordinances are considered?
Is the implication that we don’t follow the Comprehensive Plan? Because I think in general, at the council table, what I’ve found is that we take very seriously the recommendations of the planning board, and the planning board itself takes the Comprehensive Plan very seriously in making their recommendations to us. We’ve gone through an extensive rewrite recently, and I think we’ve made good changes to the Comprehensive Plan. It does take time to see those changes manifest into actual improvements in the landscape. Nothing goes as fast as we would all like at the council table, I think. But I think as a council, we have been committed to sticking to the Comprehensive Plan and will probably continue to.
Okay. Mr. O’Neil.
Yeah, I think we have a major problem right now, and that’s with the General Assembly and Speaker Mattiello. I’m going to read a quote here, because I thought a question like this might come up from Steve Alfred. “The provisions in the state statute is that local governments have the ability to maintain control of everything in their jurisdiction.” We’re at the point where we’re losing local governance granted to us by statute, and that is the problem right now. Planning board, for many decisions, DEM now runs the show on what lands and where water is. Solar development right now could be statewide, taking it out of our planning and zoning hands. This is continuing because of the special interests in Providence, in the General Assembly, specifically by the speaker and his allies, to really wind up controlling all development in the state of Rhode Island. It should be a major concern down here, and I’ve certainly spent enough time at the State House where this is fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. The next question goes to Mr. DeCruz and Mr. Sweet. What specific policies do you propose for expanding job opportunities for South Kingstown residents? Mr. DeCruz.
Specific policies? I think you can’t really get too specific, but you can definitely make sure that we have a town where businesses are welcome, where there are resources. You know, we have to be our biggest cheerleader out there in terms of when there’s a new business coming into the state, or even businesses that are currently outside of our state. In terms of things that we can do, we can work together with URI. There’s a Small Business Development Center there that I think is well underutilized by folks in our town. It’s basically free help. There’s a Chamber of Commerce. There’s local merchant associations in our town. But also, I think we need to look at certain areas in our town where we could potentially develop small types of industrial parks that are out of the way and people don’t see them, but that we can attract local business to help our tax base. Thank you.
Mr. Sweet. What specific policies do you propose for expanding job opportunities for South Kingstown residents?
I don’t think that there is any specific plans that you could have. I think this is going to be something that’s going to develop over time. I think with the three school buildings that are going to become available, I think that those three are going to be golden opportunities to potentially make those business-oriented and bring businesses in into the town. I also think that the business tax that we have I also think that the business tax that we have, if we got rid of that, I think that would also encourage other businesses from other areas in the state to want to come down, because I believe everywhere else in the state has that tax.
Thank you. Ms. Bergner?
I think one of the great untapped resources that I would like to work on in terms of economic development is to work with the University of Rhode Island. I've worked there for 20 years, and there's an incredible amount of faculty working on some interesting projects that we could work with them and, again, with the Small Business Innovation Center to collaborate in terms of agriculture and in aquaculture, both at the College of Environmental and Life Sciences and on the Bay campus. We need to listen to what the faculty are researching and figure out if there are changes that we can make in areas of town to locate their opportunities. I think that's a great resource. And likewise, small businesses, we are a small business owner ourselves. My husband and brother work together in a business. And so, meeting with small businesses, identifying what their needs are, and working collaboratively with them to solve some of their challenges.
Thank you. Mr. McEntee.
I think it is of great importance to work with URI and attempt to partner with them to, as well as the small businesses in our community in downtown South Kingstown, to create internships with these students, sophomores, juniors, seniors, to allow them to get hands-on experience in local business that'll allow that to translate into full-time jobs upon graduation. I also encourage, there should be, not only for students that are in college, but for students that have just finished their GED or just finished high school. There are a lot of trades jobs out there as well, so people who are unfortunate enough not to go to college or choose not to have an apprenticeship program set up as well. I think it's imperative that the town make an effort and attempt to really set up that partnership and really encourage it. Thank you.
Mr. Veely.
Yes, so I spent six years on the town's Economic Development Committee. And I can remember at the table having the discussion, why can't Main Street and Wakefield be vibrant like in many other communities in Rhode Island? And if you stroll down Main Street and Wakefield last Saturday during Oktoberfest, you can't deny that it's happened. Things are really, we've really turned the corner. So I think that we're doing a lot of right things already. I have either been in management or ownership of the business that I own today for 43 years. And at my peak, before 2008, I had 50 full-time equivalent employees. So doing business in this town, I can tell you that we are already doing a lot of them. And I think we'll continue down that path. Thank you.
Ms. Kelso.
So job opportunities come with the expansion of either existing businesses or the introduction of new businesses. So expanding job opportunities requires the town to be pro-business. And by pro-business, I mean, maybe we could streamline the processes. I have owned a private business. I understand the cumbersome regulations. And sometimes the time involved in getting through the process can be daunting. So in order to expand job opportunities, it really hinges on being pro-business and being friendly and being perhaps introducing in the town council a business ombudsman, someone that could walk new business owners through the process, let them know what regulations there are, let them know what permitting has to be completed. I think we could be proactive by putting a face on the ombudsman.
Thank you. All set? Okay. The next question goes to Ms. Bergner and Mr. Veely. In the event that a town council member resigns from the position, what process do you favor fulfilling that vacancy? Please include in your answer if you would or would not support a charter amendment to describe the process fulfilling a vacancy. Ms. Bergner.
No, I think we did have a vacancy of a town council member. And we did have a special election. I think we elected Liz in a special election. And then I think there, I believe there was a town charter change that we did put forward and pass that the vacancy, if it happened, would go to the next highest vote getter. So I think that that works. I certainly think that incurring an additional expense for a special election is probably not a wise decision. And I would think that we're currently in a place that I agree with. Is it you, Joe?
Mr. Veely.
So I was on the council when we made that request for a charter amendment. And I think what it does within the first year is allows the next highest vote getter and potentially the second highest vote getter. If a councillor were to resign from the council, I think that we need to reinstitute the use of the guillotine. It's not allowed. No, so we've done the, we've done, and I agree that we've done it, and it's working. I think it will work. We haven't had to use it, but it is certainly a better, better than a special election. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. The next question goes to Mr. Gates and Mr. McEntee. According to Housing Works Rhode Island, over half of South Kingstown renter households pay more than 1/3 of their income on housing, which means they would need to make at least $28 per hour to rent a two-bedroom apartment in South Kingstown. If elected, how would you plan on improving affordable housing for individuals and families in our town? Mr. Gates.
Yeah, I think that the reality is, as you had said, that we do have a shortage of affordable housing. The state has mandated or given guidelines for each community to come up with a larger percentage of affordable housing. I think we can achieve that through a couple of different mechanisms. One is the use of infill development. This is a role that the town has in spurring development of affordable housing, as well as other types of development. But this is a tool that we could use along with encouraging developers to leverage some of the infill development opportunities by potentially setting up some bonding, that's an option, and potentially working with nonprofit organizations to set up some revolving funds to reuse existing housing stock and create some reuse opportunities.
Thank you. Mr. McEntee.
There is no question that affordable housing is an issue that is affecting SK. And looking at the budget, you can see the population in SK is becoming older. Less and less younger people are living here. And as a result, we're seeing a decline in school enrollment. There needs to be serious action taken by the council to ensure that there are affordable housing options available for young professionals. Currently, the state recommends that 10% of the houses in any town to be affordable. Right now, South Kingstown is below 6%. So there needs to be serious effort in terms of addressing this issue. I believe that it makes sense to work with developers and encourage them and provide incentives for them to create more affordable housing. I intend to address that as one of my main issues if elected. I think it's important to create and develop relationships with these developers, to continue to implement and develop affordable housing throughout town, but especially in the downtown areas. Thank you.
Ms. Gladhill.
Yeah, I think affordable housing is definitely the most crucial issue that's facing the community right now. And it's not unique to South Kingstown. Across New England, we're seeing a crisis in the lack of affordable housing. And when I say affordable housing, there's two different types. There's the Big A affordable housing, which is deed-restricted. And then there's Little A affordable housing, which is workforce housing, which is houses that are affordable. So I think as we're approaching this, we need to be thoughtful and think about not just homes that are deed-restricted for folks that qualify for it, but also homes that a nurse can work in, a teacher can work in. They might not qualify for a deed-restricted home, but they need housing, and we want them here. I think as we see these properties potentially come offline, like Kernis Corner Middle School, which has the potential to be, I think it was like 200 acres that we discussed at a meeting on Tuesday, that's really attractive to a developer. And we need to be able to proactively work with developers and say, what can we offer you that would make you build houses that people can afford in South Kingstown? So I think that this council in particular has worked really hard to do that and to forge those relationships, and we're going in the right direction.
Thank you. Wow, okay. I'll start from the right. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd agree with a lot of what Liz just said and say that, you know, it continues to be a priority for us at the council table. I think we've bandied about some really interesting ideas. In particular, I think we should look at using some of the real estate conveyance tax, which we've been dedicating solely to open space acquisition until this point, and bifurcate that to open space acquisition and affordable housing. If we can create a little seed money to really pursue some of the opportunities that we might see on the land that's opening up in town, we could do some really innovative affordable housing developments, I believe. And that's something that I hope to work on in the coming term.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kelso.
So I too would like to just reiterate that there's a big difference between affordable housing, or housing that's subsidized, and housing that's affordable. So I think we need to address, as a council, the housing that's affordable issue. We've done a great deal of work supporting and a lot of success with a land trust. And I think we need now to have a people and housing trust. So I think we need to explore ways to expand the way we're thinking about housing that's affordable and put some resources into helping families that maybe are on the cusp of being able to afford what's out there, afford it. And we can put some plans and parameters and some funding in place. And that would not only increase our population that's now aging and hopefully will bring in the young folks and young families. And that will go across the board, helping a lot of issues in this town.
Thank you. Mr. DeCruz.
So affordable housing is very, very important to me. I spent seven years on the Board of Habitat, building houses in Providence and surrounding communities, and also building houses outside of the country. The biggest thing that I think we have to remember is that the council is working very hard at this issue. We allocated $100,000 to study affordable housing and what it should look like in our town. It's extremely concerning, because I think about being in real estate and the fact that I get calls all the time. And folks, in order to afford the median home in our town, is a $350,000 median home, you have to make like $70,000 as a family, and it doesn't leave much for anything else. One of the things I've been doing personally with my wife is we've been buying rental properties and, you know, renting properties to people in our town, which I think is very helpful, because that's the other thing that we don't have enough of, is rentals in our town. One thing that we could change is density requirements in certain areas. And lastly, talk about accessory dwellings as well.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you. Yeah, there's been, beside affordable housing, quite a few mention, folks have mentioned tonight about seniors. And that is a growing population. And we haven't done enough. Matter of fact, the last, I think, five or six years, we have not increased the elderly abatement that we've offered them. $13,000 of income with a person that owns a home, they can get $2,100 of property tax relief. It ends at $37,000 with $450 of tax relief. But nothing's changed in the last five years, except higher prices for them to live, higher inflation. What we need to do, what Mr. McEntee mentioned earlier tonight, we need to consider a Homestead Act, like Narragansett has, for our senior residents in South Kingstown, maybe over 55, maybe over 60. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll sit now. Okay. This last question in this round goes to Ms. Gladhill and Ms. Kelso. Okay. What specific ideas do you have to address the opioid addiction problem in South Kingstown? Ms. Gladhill.
So we're really fortunate to have the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention in South Kingstown. We work with them collaboratively. There's a member of the council that's part of their organization. And we hear from them regularly about the initiatives that they're focusing on. Our police chief has been very proactive in making sure that all of our police officers have Narcan, that we're able to educate people and dispose of medication in a safe way with medical waste disposal containers at our local pharmacies, including some of our locally-owned businesses like Green Line Apothecary. The police station has them. The opioid education really needs to begin, though, with our children in our schools. It's about prevention, it's about education, and it's about teaching parents how to protect their children from addiction and how to not put them in a situation where they're exposed to narcotics.
Thank you. Ms. Kelso.
So I agree with Liz that the most proactive way to address the opioid crisis in any town is through education. And as long as our schools have the ability to educate our students on health issues, I think opioid education right now probably should be at the forefront of everything. We know it's at a crisis level. We know the police department is working proactively to help combat the issue. But it isn't something that can be addressed, I don't believe, solely on a council level. I think it's a community effort that needs to come together, and that's all pieces of the community: parents, children, families, the police, the council. Everybody needs to get involved and recognize the signs first, and then recognize that we need to address it on a community level as well as an individual level.
Thank you. Mr. DeCruz.
Yes. The opioid crisis is something that I think a lot of people sometimes don't think about, but it's a really big issue in our town. And we've been working hard at it with the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention. Sorry about that. And what I think we really need to do as a town and as the council is to give the SKPP and other programs in our town the funding that it needs in order to be successful in making a dent in it. Also, we need to have resources in place for the patients and their families. I've had several families reach out to me. You'd be surprised, you know, at who these people are that are dealing with this issue. This issue does not discriminate based on sex, race, income level. Once you get hooked on it, you're hooked on it. And it can be ultimately very devastating and end in death. So we need to do something now and not wait.
Thank you. Okay. We're now going to move to the lightning round questions, which require only a yes or no answer. And each candidate will be given 10 seconds to elaborate on the yes or no. Okay. First question. If the new school committee votes to alter the facilities plan, thereby changing projected operational savings, will you vote to approve a property tax transfer increase to make up the budget increase? Mr. Sweet.
No.
It depends on the situation and what the school department is presenting for their property tax transfer. It's not a simple yes or no.
Yeah, there's no question that a little more information might be needed there. I would be inclined to vote no without more information, though.
Okay. Mr. O'Neill.
I would have to vote no without any more information. And until we know at the state of Rhode Island whether the promise is going to come through.
Ms. Bergner.
I would vote no.
For me, it would depend, and I would need more information to make that decision. I would prefer not to, but would have to analyze the figures to come to a conclusion on that.
I would vote no, but really looking for more information as well.
Mr. Gates.
Ditto on more information. I would point out that the value, when we talk about values of keeping Wakefield School open, go far beyond education. They go to the essence of our community and what our village is.
Mr. Collins.
Yeah, it's sort of an impossible question to answer without more information, but I do think we need to support our schools. And if the operational expenses increase to keep Wakefield open, then we might need to vote for it.
Thank you. Okay. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Gladhill. In your opinion, have the town council budgets over the past five years adequately funded routine maintenance and capital equipment expenditures such that there will not be unexpected unexpected major budgetary expenses in these categories? Ms. Gladhill?
So that's a great question. When we look to our neighbors in North Kingston, we see them facing a crisis with their capital improvement plans and their buildings because they weren't maintained, and there wasn't a long-term plan for how to maintain those buildings. In South Kingston, we have, oh, was this a 10-second question? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was a longer question.
Sorry. I tuned out, too. I tuned out as well, Mr. Bailey.
I'm going to need the question once more.
Okay. In your opinion, have town council budgets over the past five years adequately funded routine maintenance and capital equipment expenditures such that there will not be unexpected major budgetary expenses in these categories?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, absolutely, yes. And that's the sad part. South Kingston is one of the few towns that actually has a six-year capital program to improve facilities.
Okay. Ms. Bergner?
Yes, I believe to the best of my knowledge, they have.
Mr. Bergner? Mr. DeCruz?
Yes, we have. And Steve did a really good job at planning out capital improvements over the years. Thank you.
Mr. McEntee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I'd like to make sure it continues.
Mr. Gates?
Yes, I think our former town manager had a reputation of being very diligent in maintaining a cap on those spendings.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Okay. Let's try this again with 10 seconds. Okay. Mr. Bailey. Should South Kingston place limits on the building permits along our coast?
No.
Mr. O'Neill?
And quickly, I think there's, if we haven't figured out that 100-year storms are now happening every two years, we better wake up sooner than later.
Bergner?
Yes, I believe we should.
No.
Mr. McEntee?
Yes, I believe it's imperative. I think preserving our coastline in South Kingston, sorry, is of great importance to our people here, and I'd definitely say yes.
I'd need to know what "along our coast" means, but if you're talking immediate coast in the sand or on the dunes or just adjacent to it, yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes, I think we have to have the courage and fortitude to protect our citizens going forward in the future. And to do that, we may have to place restrictions.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
No.
Yes, with collaboration.
Okay. Do we have time for another one of these? Okay. Beginning with Mr. O'Neill. Would you consider changing the ownership of town water supplies? Mr. O'Neill?
I'm afraid it's too late. Most water supplies in the United States are now owned by European consortiums.
Ms. Bergner?
To be very honest, I'd have to do a lot more research before I answer that question if we should switch.
Mr. DeCruz?
I would have to agree with Jim. And, you know, I believe it is too late to do that. This particular company has been around for close to 100 years, and we have to figure out a way to make sure that we have input.
Mr. McEntee?
Considering the lack of sewage to cover the losses by the businesses due to the contaminated water, I would say, yes, we should consider switching.
Okay. Ms. Kelso?
I don't believe it's feasible.
Okay. Mr. Gates?
Not as of yet. I think the town is, through the town manager, is still inquiring as to some of the root causes.
Yeah, I don't think we have the constitutional authority to switch the ownership of that particular water system. I do think it's worth having a conversation about redeveloping our own water system.
Okay. Mr. Sweet?
No, I don't think we should take over the water system.
I would like to take over the water system, but I just don't think it's a feasible thing at this time.
Bailey?
No.
Okay. We got time for this? So we're going to go to the closing statements now. And I believe we're starting with Mr. Sweet. He didn't order. One minute.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My name is Greg Sweet, and I'm running for a seat for the town council. We need a voice that will speak to fairness for all residents. If you give me that chance, I'll work hard to achieve this. Having owned a business for the last 20 years, I've learned how to plan for the future. Our town will have three school buildings that no longer will be needed. We need to plan to dispose of the property in a way which will benefit all residents of South Kingston. We need to focus on our core services. We need to make sure that they are fully funded, but in a reasonable manner. Our residents need to have accountability from all our town departments. Each department needs to keep residents in mind when they are putting the budgets together and need to hold them accountable for those budgets. Needs not want should be how the budgets are made. My name is Greg Sweet, and I'm asking to vote for number six on November 6th.
Ms. Gladhill?
Hi, I'm Liz Gladhill. I'm a lifelong resident of South Kingston and an incumbent. I have two small children in the school system. They just started kindergarten at Wakefield School, so you can guess where my opinion is on Wakefield School. And I just want to say happy anniversary to my husband, who's here tonight, spending our 10th anniversary at the forum. I think that our town's at a really crucial point right now in our efforts to address affordable housing. And I think we've finally started making meaningful change with our density changes and our approach to zoning. And I think that we need to continue that important work. And I think I'm the person that can do that. I am immersed in our community. I'm part of the Merchant Association downtown. I volunteer with several groups across the community, and I really understand what the average citizen is facing when they say they can't afford to stay in our community. And we need those voices at the table. So I'm looking forward to earning your vote for next term.
Mr. Bailey?
Hi, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. I'd also like to thank the town in Narragansett for the air conditioning, because we don't have air conditioning in our town hall. My name is Joe Bailey, and I ask for your vote on November 6th. My last four years on the town council have been both educational and rewarding. I am committed to making South Kingston a town that is affordable. It is important for the discussion to include the impact of our decisions on you, the taxpayer. There are common sense solutions to our problems. We can implement them while still respecting you. I feel that my experience and time in South Kingston brings a different perspective to the fiscal issues facing our taxpayers. I have proven in key votes that my goal is to control spending while still providing necessary services. Balance on our town council is very important, and I think I bring that balance. And again, I ask for your vote on November 6th. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yep. Well, here's what we know. We are a very attractive community to both in-state and out-of-state folks who come here. We're green, we're environmental, we've got great performing schools, great teachers do that. We've got the hospital, URI, the Bay Campus, world-renowned. That brings in huge amount of business from tourists and new businesses. Our village concept planning has worked very well. I really believe there, why we need to change anything at all. What we have is working very well. Storm clouds, I mentioned earlier, we may have a huge debt coming up for the schools that we need to improve. Seniors I talked about earlier that need help. And the one thing we need, when no one talked about, was safe schools. We need to have a Speaker of the House who understands and doesn't answer to the NRA and answers to the people of this community and other communities. That's what we need to do first and foremost. I'm Jim O'Neill, and thank you for the time, and thank you to the League.
Ms. Bergner?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. My name is Deb Bergner, and I'm running for the first time for office because I care about our town and I want to guide our community during what we all know is an important time for the future of South Kingston. My husband and I moved here in 1997, and I've been actively involved ever since. Our three children are graduates from South Kingston's public schools. I work in housing and residential life at the University of Rhode Island, helping students in supporting their academic and personal goals. I've graduated from Brown University with a degree in urban studies, studying how communities grow, thrive, and decline, how they are organized and governed, and how to build inclusive, safe, and sustainable communities. Our town cannot be defined by a single identity. We are a seaside, residential, tourist community that prides ourselves on historic vibrant villages. We are a college town with thriving Main Street and strong local businesses. We have it all: farms, forests, rivers, the ocean, parks, open space, and bike paths, and an excellent public school system, and so much more. If elected, I will always act in the community's best interest. I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Mr. DeCruz?
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on and for everyone that's watching here and on TV at home. My name is Bryant DeCruz. I'm looking to get reelected to the town council. I am committed to our town and our quality of life. Key points for me are fiscal responsibility, economic development, the environment, our educational system, public safety, our physical infrastructure. And for those that know me, I really do try to be very thoughtful in my decisions, and I always try to make sure that I'm representing the entire town. I ask for your vote on November 6th, so please vote for Bryant DeCruz. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McEntee?
I'd like to thank the Women League of Voters for putting on this forum, and thank you to all of you in attendance tonight. My name is Rory McEntee, and I am an endorsed Democrat. I have lived in South Kingston for almost all of my life, having gone through the public schooling system from pre-K through grade 12. I have a master's degree in business and currently work as a CPA at Pittrali Gilstein &amp; Company, an accounting firm in downtown Providence. My campaign has been focusing on issues such as education, environment, and the economy. I am committed to ensuring the highest quality education in our public schools, protecting our coastlines, preserving our land, supporting the success of small businesses, and working to maintain an efficient budget. I am also focused on engaging the younger people of S.K. as we direct the future of this great town. As a 25-year-old young professional committed to this town, I believe I can provide just that. I'd like to encourage all of you to consider voting for me on November 6th. Thank you.
Ms. Kelso?
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for your tireless efforts to keep the voters informed. I am running for town council because I believe that South Kingston is a great place to live, work, and visit. I moved here from Warwick to attend college and never left. I raised my three children here and understand what a wonderful place it truly is. As adults, they have all chosen to make this town their home as well. My life's experiences give me a good foundation for understanding the town's varied constituencies and the knowledge to balance the needs of all. I have run a successful private business as well as a nonprofit. My goal will be to build upon what has been accomplished by prior councils and ensure that the progress achieved does not revert or slide due to naysayers. There comes a time in your life when you can no longer sit on the sidelines and hope for the best. That time for me is now, and I ask for your vote on November 6th. Thank you.
Mr. Gates?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to meet here tonight. I'm going to take a little bit of a different tact. You can go to my website in order to get some biographical information and experiences if you're interested. But I'd like to share with you what my highest priority is going to be, and that is going to be, if elected, working with my fellow colleagues on the town council to implement a complete villages plan. Whereas we've spent many of the last couple of decades, many years during the last couple of decades on planning, I would like to move this into an implementation phase. What are complete villages? Complete villages are places where people live, they work, they recreate, they pray, they practice their faith. Yes, and they also learn. So how do we get there? There's a lot of tools that I can give you specifics on, and again, would reference you back to my website. But this is a real plan with real benefits to everybody that lives in this town. It's not about spending, it's about good decision-making and carrying out the governance of the town of South Kingston. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, everyone here tonight in the League. You know, it's interesting times we live in, certainly, and especially for those of us involved in politics. I'd like to thank everybody up here tonight for stepping forward and putting their names into the race. I would rather have you on the council and leading this country than a lot of the people in Washington, certainly. I'm not naming names. But here at the local level, we have a lot of work to continue. It's been the greatest honor of my life, the last four years, serving as president and as vice president. I want to continue to work with the people on the council, the volunteers on our boards, to make sure our community is continuing to improve the quality of life for our residents. That means good planning, as Murray was talking about. It means investing in affordable housing. It means supporting our schools, and I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana?
Would you like to? Dana? Time to... I'd like to thank the candidates, and you may, too. I'd also like to thank those of you who are here in the town hall in Narragansett and for our viewers on public access television. Please attend the next Meet the Candidates night, which is October 24th, for the state senators from districts 35 and 36, and representatives from districts 33, 34, and 35, all of whom represent Narragansett and South Kingston. All forums will be here at the Narragansett Town Hall, starting at 6:30 p.m. This forum, as I said before, will be rebroadcast on Cox Channel 17 and Verizon Channel 28, frequently between now and Election Day. There is a rebroadcast schedule on our website, www.lwvri.org. If you received an audience survey, we greatly appreciate your completing it. If you didn't, there are probably some blank ones in the back. We'd love for you to give us your feedback. Thanks.